Discussion items. Tonight, the purpose for this meeting is to discuss Policy 0167.3, Public Participation at Board Meetings. A little background, actually, a year ago, at a board meeting, the district adopted the Neola policy set because MASP stopped wanting to provide a set of policies to boards. So at that time, we adopted 2,500 pages of policies, et cetera, and the policy committee is charged from that point on to go through the new policies, section by section, with a little better fine-tooth comb to clean up things, discrepancies between our old policies and the new policies. So when we got to the policy of public comment, we, and I know we did this, we probably said, "Well, historically, we had two people show up, so we will leave that one go for now and concentrate on other things." So recent events have caused public comment to increase in size, and we need to change our rules a little bit to accommodate the meeting. The primary purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, not to get public input. We value public input, there's many ways to get it, we can hold public forums to get public input. So that's kind of a little bit of a background. Now, there's been some controversy over Policy 131.1, Boards' Bylaws and Policies, and how we adopt them. There is absolutely no state law that says you may adopt your policies by doing A, B, C, or D. The adoption of policies is solely controlled by our policy, which we maintain and create 131.1. So this policy speaks to compelling reasons to immediate change. For example, a sense of student safety has come up. It speaks to technical corrections that are able to be done by resolution as opposed to following what would be the normal adoption procedures. So board members, each, I want to say each, interpret policy like everyone interprets everything they read a little differently. So this is why this policy showed up as an action item on this meeting. So with a little further discussion with our friends at the Michigan Association of School Boards, and to give everyone the full history of what's really going on here, we changed it back to a discussion item so that the full board could talk about this policy. So I was the originator of the submission of this policy to the policy committee, so I will quickly walk through the changes that we are making on this policy that are highlighted in yellow if you have it attached to your agenda. So people who have longer than, need longer than three minutes can ask to be placed on the agenda. That first yellow box is just to reiterate that if that is approved, the 15 minutes is allotted to that person to be on the agenda, and that is what we would call extended public comment. It is not a back-and-forth session with the board. We also put back, and I got to say, our old MASP policy was reflected a little bit in our request sheet, on our website. We have a little bit of cleanup to do, so some of this stuff is really circling around as maintenance. So if a large group plans to attend, notification should be made to the superintendent at least one day prior to the meeting to assure seating for the group. They are requested, not required, to select up to five representatives to speak on their behalf for a total of not more than 15 minutes. That is pretty much there in place. I mean, the gut feeling of the board is if five people are saying the same thing, we kind of get the idea of what's going on. So under the section, "The Presiding Officer Shall Be Guided by the Following Rules," we have added, re-added, I should say, "Public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally. And in addition, if we exceed that, an additional public participation portion will be permitted at the end of the agenda, so that an individual's right to address the board will not be denied." This is right from the Open Meetings Act, which I'll call OMA for the rest of the night. That is directly from there. For C, we have always asked people to register their intention to participate when they showed up at the meeting. C, we've just changed to eliminate the requirement of address and are thinking that we would have checkbox for whether you're a student and whether you're a district resident. OMA says that we are allowed to identify people who are addressing us. D, we took out the word address, so they don't have to give that. E, we clarified there, we've always had three-minute duration, we just added that a warning, verbal or other method will be issued when the participant has 30 seconds remaining. Minutes may not be given or shared with other participants. During this time, the board listens to comments from the public, but does not engage in dialogue or render decisions. That's directly from MASP. And we added I, that individual addressing the board shall abide by rules of common courtesy. The meeting cannot be used in any personal attacks against a board member, district employee, community member, or student. And that was always on our request form. So in essence, what we've done is brought this policy back to what it was for the last 10 years. From 2008 to 2018, this essentially was the basis of our public comment. And I think that pretty much summarizes what's going on. So board members, discussion?
Yes, Paul. President Heinecke. Some of our sessions usually don't have a second public comment, right, the study sessions? So is this, A, now going to apply to both study session and the regular work meeting?
Correct.
Cool. So we're in fact stating we'll have more public sessions, more public opportunities to speak?
That's how I wrote it as well.
Well, OMA specifies that we can put public participation at the beginning or the end, it's our call. So if we exceed, we're usually have it at the beginning. The intent to public comment at the beginning of the agenda is to comment on those items that are on the agenda. We'd like feedback to things we're acting on at that meeting. So if we exceed that 30 minutes, we will then shift to the second meeting. If there's nothing left of the second, we just go by that.
Will that, just to clarify, will that public comment section then come before, if we're going into a closed session, it'll come before we have a closed session?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. So first of all, I support your recommendations around what I would call technical alignment, right? The fact that the handout that folks sign in on here says one thing, and then the website says something a little bit different. I think point I is a good point, you know, that's on the handout, and I don't think it was in the policy, so always good to have that. And I think, you know, the address, folks had asked about that, we were all here, we were all a little uncomfortable with that as well, I think. And so certainly, none of us want to make a student feel uncomfortable. And I think the intent of the policy as it existed was to identify people from outside of the district and inside of the district, which people are calling stakeholders in the community. So I think that that's a good thing, and I like the checkboxes for the new form.
The other intent of the address was to, if people needed follow-up action, back in the day, you would mail or something to them.
You could have other contact.
Other contact information. So that was. And I randomly Googled districts in the state and looked at their policies, and almost all of them still require address. I mean, it's, you know, times are changing.
And that's true with city council, correct? Michael, with, with.
Yeah, well, city council requires addresses.
Well, it's to verify if they're actually in the city, or are they a legitimate stakeholder to the people who are making the decision.
Well, that's also not, giving an address doesn't bar them from speaking, though. If you're, if you're living in the township, if you're living in Ann Arbor, that's not a.
That's true, they can still be a salinity.
Prohibiting factor.
Right.
It just helps us to know who we're talking to, who's listening to you.
I did want to talk about schools of choice just for a second, because I think we're all on the same page. So under item C, it says SAS student and SAS district resident, that includes their school of choice families, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. And so on the form, then, the two boxes, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that their feedback is of course. And they should mark SAS district resident.
Well, there. So with just the two checkbox items, do you think people would be discouraged who don't fit within that box from even speaking to begin with? Will we have a third box of?
Well, I guess if they haven't checked student or SAS district resident, then we would just assume, I guess, potentially incorrectly, that, I mean, we could change that to say other.
Another box.
Other.
Well.
Or we could say, I don't know.
Well, by not checking either box, doesn't that signify others?
Others, sort of does.
But does it read as you have to check one of those boxes to even speak?
The checking of the boxes is informational. I mean, I don't.
I don't think it says the other way. And there's one right there.
We can set the rules to identify according to OMA. So if we're saying you must check one of these boxes if it applies to you, if not, we're assuming other. I would assume.
For example, in group affiliation, we put if applicable. And so, you know, that, like, if one of these applies, check it, if it doesn't, no.
Yeah, so identifying it ahead of, okay.
I wanted to also talk about those two portions of comment, because there's been a lot of misinformation around public comment, and so I just wanted to make sure that we've clarified everything as a board. We had a recent announcement that we would place students first on the agenda. Students have always been welcome to address the Board of Education. That's not a change. Correct?
That's correct.
So I, and to that effect, we should potentially policyize that and add letter J that says students may receive priority at public comment.
I would love that.
I mean, I'm going to use the word "may" because the situation is always.
Right, and sometimes a student may decide to speak after the students have gone, but yeah.
And I would say, in that case, they would just not click or select student, and they would come up when they were called.
Right, or if it's part of second comment, then they would write at the top.
I mean, there was a student who indicated he wanted to go last, so he could hear everything else, and so he did not check that box, so.
I mean, I guess my, I guess what I want to, I guess, put out there is, you know, a year ago, we could have called this special meeting, had this meeting, made the changes to the policy for the betterment of our students and the safety of our students, and not have been criticized, or nobody probably would even pay attention. But fast forward to where we are right now, and we live in a different school district now. Bottom lines, we're under microscope, where there are parents that feel like they've been marginalized, they're, you know, they lack the trust, they lack trust in the district and the board. And I think at this point, and sometime soon, we have to start building that trust. This is not the place that we can continue to have this debate. We need to, we need to move forward, and we have to move forward, and I think it starts with us starting to build trust within the community. So I think we need to, I think we need to move this to the agenda on the last day of, or June 25th agenda, as an action item. And that's the first step in starting to build this trust.
And what would the action item be?
To approve this policy. I mean, I don't have a problem with the way this policy is written, and we're bringing it in line with what we've been used to, but there is, because of 131.1, there's the debate right now of whether or not this, we should be doing this this way, or we should be doing it another way. And I think that we need to slow down, take a breath, and start building trust within this community.
So I agree, and I like that. What I would also say is I would love to see factual information be circulated in the community. I personally have read and been emailed things that are just not factual. I read a news article at M-Live today saying that they had contacted me personally, I've never been contacted by M-Live since I've been a trustee, among other things. We need factual information and trust on both sides.
Trust on both, okay, yeah. No, I get, and I think we have to, we have to step out first and start, start building that trust.
And I think part of 131.1, in the old policy, when the policy committee met, we, in our policy, said that was the first reading. That was because I've been on the board since 2006, and we've gone through 5,000 pages of policy since that time. So it was to expedite getting policy in place, so we knew how to run the district, or Mr. Gray knew how to run the district. So, you know, I can see that Policy 131.1 will probably come soon with some modifications to it to specifically say, this is how we will adopt Policy A, B, C, D, instead of leaving it up to interpretation and some kind of vague link. So look forward to that soon.
Mr. President, I also support what you've got here, the changes that are proposed. I have not seen or read anything that dissuades me of these changes. I, like trustee Austin, am disturbed by how we're going about it, it just does not build trust the way we're doing it. We can't make this a common practice of how we do operate, but looking at the totality of everything, the changes here being technical in nature, I don't have any problem with this whatsoever.
I agree, I look at it as more technical and safety.
Well, and there is, like, I looked at the Traverse City, they had a policy meeting on Friday of last week, and at the board meeting on Monday, those policies were all adopted by resolution in the consent agenda. So they were technical in nature, scrupulous errors. I mean, last night, we talked about the word mail should be email. I mean, there are little things that don't get caught, you know, as you go through all these policies, because there's a lot of them. So, you know, I think a tightened-down policy on how we adopt these would probably benefit everyone.
I agree. And then the intent overall is positive. And I think, I think Michael said it, it actually expands public comment opportunity, because usually we don't have a second opportunity in the working session.
Well, and if you go read other districts, this is, I don't hesitate to say it's more liberal than other districts. I mean, some of them do not.
Five people comment, and that's it.
Yeah. I know Ann Arbor takes how many people, fill out slips, divides that into the 45 minutes they've allocated at the beginning, and they get that amount of time. So, I mean, it's different.
I understand the need for this, because, you know, even though this is an item now, we have had, you know, put out about students, like, we put out that statement, it's been a conversation for a few meetings now, so thank you for bringing it into one document, I appreciate that, and I know what you're going for with that.
And I like this highlighting and seamless change. It's easier.
That works. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think this is really good at keeping it focused on, we need to do the business of the board and the district, and, you know, there are other opportunities for public comment, too, that if we don't have time to get to everything before the board meeting or whatever, hopefully, people are using those other methods for communicating with the district as well, so.
And Scott, you do a really good job with the let's talk and kind of getting that out there, community conversation. Which are always good things, too.
Right, the idea of feedback from the community around policy or planning a program and different issues, I think the community forum is the better forum for this, as the board's restricted in terms of how it can respond, and so the idea of two-way communication is often done best in the community forums.
Maybe that's a good idea.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, we'll quickly try to get through four public comment people. Brianna?
Oh, can that be moved to the?
To 6:30?
Yeah, sorry.
Certainly, thank you.
And along with my partners. Thank you. Kevin, thank you very much.
Matthew Smith.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board, specifically about the public comment. I've been here for a few of the board meetings, and the board meetings have seemed like a, more like a public argument than a public comment. I appreciate you making some changes. I was wondering if part of that change could be to eliminate some sort of back-and-forth that goes on, oh, that's a good comment, I want to reply to that, or I don't like what he said, I want to reply to that. Is there a way that there can be a cutoff where before the public comment starts, anyone who wants to address the board will present their slips to the board, and then if you want to address another party who comes up and stands and speaks, well, that's not the form. The form is public comments to the board. So I was wondering if part of your policy changes, as you're looking to change policy, could include something that would prevent the kind of arguments and acrimony that I've seen? Now, I understand that not every board meeting will be as contentious as some of your recent board meetings, so perhaps it won't always be needed, but I certainly don't see why people are up here arguing with each other in front of the board. Thank you for your time.
Adam Davis.
Hello, my name is Adam Davis, I have three stu-, six students in the school, and just graduated this year, and I was a Selenum alumni. Just wanted to thank you so much for the quick response to writing emails this afternoon, requesting additional time to look over this policy before it's voted on. That's really it, I really appreciate the work you're doing, I know it's tough, and I'm sorry, sorry to kind of, I feel like I'm putting the thumbs roots to you, but I feel, I feel like the policy and process is important, and I want to make sure that we're together as a community on this. Thank you very much.
Set of a motion to adjourn the Special Board of Education meeting, June 11, 2019, at 6:24 PM.
So moved.
Support. All those in favor, please signify with aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. We adjourn until 6:30. Thank you. I'd like to call and order the regular board meeting, Tuesday, June 11, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We will start our subdue slash staff showcase tonight, and our 2019 Retiree Recognition Assistant Superintendent Ellis.
Thank you, President Heinecke. We have, as I'm sure you've heard, 23 individuals who have elected to retire from salinity schools this year, and we're very, very pleased to have 12 of them here tonight with us. The 23 individuals who have retired from the district represent a total of 568 years of experience, so we're losing a tremendous amount of experience and talent here tonight. As has been our tradition for the last several years, we give each retiring employee a plaque with their years of service on it, and a little poem, and I'll take just a second to read that poem to you. The poem's called "The Builder," and it says, "I once saw a group of men tearing a building down, a group of men in my hometown. With a heave and a hoe and a mighty yell, they swung a beam and the sidewall fell. I asked the foreman, 'Are these men skilled, the type you'd hire if you wanted to build?' He laughed and said, 'Why, no indeed, common labor is all I need, for I can tear down in a day or two what it took the builder ten years to do.' And I asked myself, as I walked away, 'Which of these roles am I going to play? Am I the type that constantly tears down as I make my way foolishly around, or am I the type that is trying to build with care, with the hope that the people will be glad I was there?'" And on behalf of salinity schools, I want to assure our retirees, their friends and family that are here tonight, we are glad you were here. You've all been builders for us here in this community, and we're very, very fortunate and much richer for your experience. And so, on behalf of the district, I'd like to thank you. Superintendent Grayden is over there with our plaques, and so I'll call these individuals who I know are here tonight up, and they can come and receive their plaque from Superintendent Grayden. So Deanna Akins.
It's like some graduational over giving. Did I see Kevin Musson, is Kevin here? Suzie does take the cake with years of service, she's just completed her 38th year of service. And last but not least, I'm not sure if Miranda left her seat up here empty on purpose or not, but Janice Warner, who was our assistant superintendent. Again, to the group, on behalf of the school district and the students that you served through the years, thank you so much for lending your time and talent to this district, and we wish you all the best, we hope you continue to stay in touch. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, that's a lot of years of teaching, and we appreciate it from every one of you. Okay, the BILiteracy Seal, world language.
So we're here tonight to honor a group of our high school students who are receiving the SAS Seal of BILiteracy. So I'd like to call up Beth Gregonis, who is our world language chair, a Spanish teacher at the high school. And we're going to go through a very brief presentation on what the Seal of BILiteracy is, and then Beth is going to call the students that are here up to receive their seal, and then for those that couldn't make it, we're going to make sure that we pass on the seal to them. So we're going to go over this brief presentation. So why was the seal developed? And you look up here, the Michigan Seal of BILiteracy created to recognize high school graduates who exhibit language proficiency, not only in English, but at least one additional world language. In terms of proficiency, how do we determine it, based on being intermediate, high proficiency, unacceptable world language assessments? So Beth's going to talk briefly about what type of assessment we gave to all of these students to show that they were at this intermediate, high proficiency level.
We had 24 students test in five different languages, and the test that we use is called the S. use is called the stamp. It assesses proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. It took students, on average, four hours to complete the test. Over a couple of days, the testing. We did have one student, Brittany Bryant, who tested in two languages and received the seal in multiple languages, so that was pretty exciting. And then all of our students are also demonstrating proficiency by passing English classes at the high school.
And then in terms of what's the benefit of the seal, three primary points. And the first is that it encourages the study of world languages and the embracing of native inherited heritage languages. Secondly, employers look at this as, okay, here's a student that has strong language and biliteracy skills, therefore potentially a better employee, being able to reach more people. And finally, the seal serving as an additional tool for colleges and universities to recognize these abilities for admission and placement. And so we're really excited to be able to present these to students tonight. And finally, the connection between the biliteracy seal and our Selenary Schools compass is very, very strong. If you look at what we talk about when we say we'd like globally connected students, you can look in the bold print here, it talks about students are globally connected when they demonstrate their understanding of the complexities of cultures and global issues. They see viewpoints beyond their own and positively impact and connect to the world around them. All of these students have been doing that and have demonstrated this now with this seal of biliteracy. So with that said, Beth, do you want to go ahead and call up the students?
Yeah, yeah.
And I can help you pass--
And Tati's going to help pass them over.
Oh, great.
And you want to do certificates and then make sure everybody else gets the seal. Okay, the following students have demonstrated proficiency in multiple languages. In Arabic, Sarah Dumou. In French, Kayla Fortino, and as you hear your name, if you could come to the stage. Kayla Fortino, Jennifer Kosick, Elise Renberg, and Jack Warner. Our students who are receiving the award in German are Brittany Bryant, Josiah Goga, Madison Luther, and Yannick Sadik. In Mandarin, the students receiving the award are Jing Li and Eileen Zhang, who is out of town, but I believe her parents are gonna, oh, you were able to make it, great. Russian, Valeria Popovich. Spanish, Malia Austin. Cheyone Bando Patayi, I practiced before, but-- Lauren Buwer, Brittany Bryant, Regina Durst, Dana Cashman, Eric Kent, and Ashlyn Rags.
Let's give all of them a great hand.
You have a piece of Kiva?
Kiva. Jennifer Kosick.
Thank you.
Eileen.
Eileen.
Malia. Lauren. Brittany Bryant, back over here. Regina.
Oh, Brittany.
Yeah, here.
One more hand for the special group. Congratulations. Second language is a good-- Response to public comment. Last meeting, I'd just like to thank the students that spoke at the last meeting. We're always interested in hearing what students have to say from anywhere. All students are welcome to come and talk to us a little bit every now and then. We also ask, and a lot of people don't like to speak at public comment, so we ask to do let's talk or send us an email. Kind of what we didn't say is we kind of treat that as public comment. There will not always be a response. If there's a quick question that can be answered, typically a reference to a policy, we will try to answer that. Otherwise, typically we'll go to administration, follow the chain of command if there's any request. There was a lot of good feedback. We will start to acknowledge that we got your email, just so that you know that we received it. So everyone that sent one, I'm behind on responding, but we did get them all. Thank you. Just to reiterate, because sometimes you get lost and policy is difficult, but we are bound by state and federal laws and the policy tonight, we talked about one thirty-one dot one, is one of those rare exceptions where we set the policy, it's not based on any law. So we continue to support and follow laws. Administration.
Just a few quick updates. One, I would like to thank the entire high school administration, certainly the counseling staff, the buildings and grounds--
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can someone open those doors? This is an open meeting, they have to stay open.
The--
Thank you.
Thank the buildings and grounds department for their efforts for the graduation ceremony I heard last Sunday at, at Warren Stadium. Again, the weather cooperated and when the weather cooperates, that's a beautiful venue to be able to have four hundred and eighty-plus graduates walk across the stage. It was a, it was a fine day. I appreciate all their help and, and their efforts that weekend in particular to make sure that event goes smooth. Had the opportunity today to, to attend the TEDx Heritage School event. Again, I know we had some of the students come and talk a little bit about that today. They did a great job today out at the high school in terms of kind of walking through their ideas, well thought out. They did peeby legs all over the place in terms of their ability to articulate their message, it was very, very, very impressive. And I think Ms. Wong and Ms. Henson also for their efforts in that event. I'm going to pass around, the middle school yearbook is out and I would like to, Mr. Reeves does an excellent job with the middle school yearbook and we often, I'll have to look at the high school one, the middle school one they did a fine job with. I'll pass this way, the literary magazine around dreams, the Writing Center. As you may or may not know, put together a literary magazine focused around, with creative writing examples focused on dreams. So again, I really appreciate all the efforts. It's nice at this time of year to be able to see the efforts of our students kind of come to fruition, so. Get through the next few days.
Board of education members.
We had a-- Thank you, foundation meeting, but I'm going to let-- Ann Hur. Sorry, I'm going, I'm going to let Ann Hur speak on our behalf of what we did today, so we'll want to make sure that she gets an opportunity to do that instead of me.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I want to thank, if I could get a chance to thank Teresa Stager and Alex Schukau. They ran a thing called the human-centered design based on the swarm ideas. I've been sporting one of their little logos here on my laptop. Number of people submitted ideas over the past year and eight teachers, one board member, a number of folks from various staff levels came to flesh out the ideas and dig a little deeper and do what we call, they call an empathy tour. So we scattered about and I won't tell you what my idea is, but there were some excellent, excellent ideas that are going to take place and take shape in the next, by starting in the fall, we're going to start putting some meat on those bones, so to speak. So, thank you.
I just wanted to give an update on the really great partnership that we have with the Selen Police Department. So we've had two videos lately on safety for the kids. If you haven't seen them, they're terrific. Kevin Musson and the Pleasant Bridge Kids helped out Officer Dave in creating those videos along with our video friends at the high school. So the first one was on bus safety, the second was on crossing herd safety, and I know they've been shared a lot within the community, so everybody really appreciates that. They also wanted me to pass along that we do have an active shooter training on June twenty-fifth. This is something that's free. It's open to the entire community. I think Scott said you had staff going. Brian Pupper said that he had eighty people registered already. So it's a morning. It's on June twenty-fifth. You can get more information on the community ed website. It's basically about preparedness, right? Things we don't want to have to ever think about, but that do occur in our schools and malls and post office and things like that. So it's a partnership with us, the police department, YOSHA, and some health professionals as well. So that's really great. Echoing comments about Heritage, TEDx, it was phenomenal. The first one I went to, Warren Henson's first one that she did along with Katie Wong, they did an amazing job. Our students Julia, Sarah, Eli, Carmen, Henry, and Badula did an amazing job. It was also the first graduation I got to attend, so I, number one, was thrilled with the weather and number two, was blown away with how organized it was. Little Raff did a great job, I thought, as well as the counselors. And it was just so good to, we get into policy and we get into budget and we get into all of these things and it really brought it home as to what it's all about. And it was a beautiful day. I see a lot of students out there, so I just wanted to say have a wonderful summer. My kids are counting down the hours and I see some graduates too, so it's a good meeting. It's an honor.
And I'll third the Heritage TEDx. That was nice. I got to take my little one with me, so it was her first TEDx. But she did very well this evening. And I also wanted to mention that UPOR, the student organization in the high school, has for Pride Month, which is June, LGBTQ Pride Month, they have a interactive display of Stonewall, some history with LGBTQ, you know, people who were part of the beginning of Stonewall and people today. And it's the fiftieth year of Stonewall. If you don't know the history behind that, I encourage you to look it up. And UPOR will be on, possibly on June twenty-fifth, Student Showcase, so be sure to come to that. And they've also been creating buttons and there's some cute ones, I'm going to pass them around with the bee, sorry, the hornet.
Hornet.
Like hornet O B.
No Bs.
So, yeah, you can go ahead and take that.
Okay, are there any revisions to the agenda? Nope. Then I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Second, all those in favor, please signify with aye. Aye. Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Our first scheduled report is the Innovation Lab update. Dr. Lott.
I'd like to call on Kelly Woodman, who is one of our skilled and professional designers and also fifth grade teacher, and I see your partner coming in now, Julie Myers. Okay, Julie? Julie, you're up. At any rate, both, and Julie is the instructional designer that shares that position with Kelly and we also share a great classroom. At any rate, we're tonight talking about Innovation Lab. We're really excited for this new special that will be offered at K five or young fives through this grade next year. And the Innovation Lab paired with our media special is going to be really exciting for our students, especially as they aspire to meet the Compass attributes, which we already spoke about tonight. And so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly and Julie.
Okay, so we're going to begin by just kind of trying to give you a quick overview of Innovation Lab and the whole, the whole concept. So this is about what is the Innovation Lab? We'll take the space in the day that was currently held by Spanish for our young fives through fifth grade. The most exciting part of this is all the different directions and ways that this can make our students really well-rounded and give us a chance to do some things that we want to do in the day-to-day classroom, but maybe because there's so many curricular restraints, we aren't able to do. And also the equity piece and that every kid, young five through fifth grade, will get this. So if you're wondering what it might encompass, these are some of the things. So design thinking is the idea of starting with empathy and talking to people about what kind of problems exist, which is wonderful because that builds in that communication that we know all kids need to be practicing. They generate ideas to solve problems, they get some feedback and learn how to take, you know, constructive criticism, they build things that they think will work, and then they move on to testing things out. We might also do some maker space things where it would be like to actually create the thing that's in your brain, so it might be to create a game that somebody could do that was trying to do something. Or it could be to create a solution to an environmental problem, but instead of just getting the idea in their heads, to actually try to see what they can build with their hands. And the last idea is Genius Hour. It's that concept that we dictate a lot of what kids learn in school, but that they have their own curiosities that they really are interested in. Fifth graders, for example, are really interested in World War II, and we know that in our curriculum, we don't get to that till like ninth grade. So it doesn't seem like we should wait from kindergarten to ninth grade to talk about World War II if they're really invested in knowing about it. We right now have a student who's been wearing a button, he's been wearing two buttons, and I said to him, I know that first button is Winston Churchill. Who's your second button that you're wearing? He said, young Winston Churchill. Okay, okay, well, good. I know, I know where we're at. But like, that, that idea that you can look into all of these different concepts that you might want to do, whether it be historical or science or something that has to do with like things outside of school, building and baking and all kinds of things.
So one of the things we've done in the past with our students that we would like to see go further in this Innovation Lab is something as simple as improving the safety of bikes. So all kids ride bikes, but to get kids ideas of what potentially makes a bike unsafe and then what can they do to try to solve that problem. So taking the kids through the design thinking process and then also using maker space materials to design a prototype of that.
We did it several years ago and there was one of our kids' ideas like a couple of years later. It wasn't actually because of this kid, but it was in the store. They were like neon lights that went in your bike tires. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was pretty slow. This is the kinds of outcomes we can be looking for when kids get exposed to this kind of thinking and that, you know, there's not just one right answer, there's many right answers and there's many ways of getting to the right thing. So, you know, we're, we're getting kids to be more empathetic and to be looking at problems as ways that they can solve them. So these are just some of the benefits that we're hoping to see from this, this experience.
And when we think about the fact that we don't necessarily, the jobs today don't exist that our students and our classrooms are going to have, how important is it to just make them innovative and creative in their own thinkers and learners?
So the media job that currently exists has taken some steps into, media isn't quite what, it's not just read a story, check out books, and go on your merry way. Media has really begun to encompass a lot of other skills and so we're, with the addition of Innovation Lab, we're going to really, we think we are really going to get a big bang for our buck when it comes to the Compass attributes and students thinking.
So just to kind of keep it clear in all of your heads, sort of some of the differences that will then co-work together for this new job. So the Media Center obviously love for literacy, print and digital resources, diverse cultures through books, digital citizenship and safety, and then the tech tools that feed into all of those aspects.
Right, and this sort of can serve, excuse me, serve, show the different Compass attributes that could be highlighted by each of the different specials. Whereas media is going to be looking at that digitally literate and globally connected through the, through their books that they are going to be using. The Innovation Lab will be working on the creative innovator and the complex thinker and problem solver and being leaders.
And please don't think that when we say innovated or Innovation Lab, that we're thinking that this is going to be kids on a device. It is really the hope that kids will be doing a lot of hands-on discovery.
It's also a place where we can do some direct teaching. It's not that classroom teachers aren't working on all of these things, but to say, I want you to be collaborative and actually teaching, how do we be collaborative? How do we not stand on our own idea? How can we take criticism and have that mean that they still like me, they just didn't like my idea? And, you know, how do we talk to people in a way, how do we-- How do we disagree agreeably? And those kinds of things can be directly taught in a place like this. So it's generally the children need to be taught how to think, not what to think. And so this special will hopefully give kids the building blocks of being creative thinkers. Are there any questions?
I, Joe, there's two quick comments. One is I feel like one of the concepts when we talked about what will Innovation Lab be? I think, and I got used to saying, I don't, I don't know. And to some degree, this is what we're talking about, is this idea of having a creative special. I think we often, over the last several years, in the 20th century education model, where specials have picked a special. We're going to teach physical education. We're going to teach, now what we're saying is we're gonna have a block of time that is gonna be, you know, have a lot of student voice and choices involved in it as well as what it looks like in 2019, 2020. May look completely different in 25, 26, without us having to go through a process of changing. It's this idea of iteration and everything's, you know, kind of getting, evolving very quickly. It's rapid pace of change. This model that we think we're adopting now allows for that to occur without us figuring out that we have to take a year-long process to think about, pick one of three different topics or concepts that we're going to instruct on. And each of those, in this, in this particular block of time, this is now kind of our third iteration. I think we would have, if we had picked another kind of specific topic or content area, we would have over five years had we walled again. This allows for continuous and rapid evolution, so.
And it can include art, right?
It surely can, exactly, yes.
One of the students today, I think, one of the students today at the Heritage TEDx talked about our education and about how it doesn't necessarily have to be in the classroom. It can be anywhere. This quote made me think of another favorite quote is, you shouldn't ask a child what do they want to be when they grow up? You should ask them what problem do they want to solve? Right. And that's exactly what this is about.
We have some great resources already set up in the district that are really gonna help us with this. This summer, we'll be doing more planning with this. We'll be working with the instructional designers, the Media Center specialists, and those that are now in these Innovation Lab roles. And Meg Phillips, who currently runs the Makerspace Pleasant Ridge, she now will be able to take on more of a district role in helping support this as well. So we're really excited with putting all of these people together to further plan this out and make it a really exciting experience for our kids.
At the risk of feeding into Celine's famous competitive streak, last week at the Henry Ford, 500 kids from around the country, Singapore and Mexico and one or two from China came to be part of the Invention Convention. And I was a judge at that. I judged a couple of rounds of the grade threes, third grades. So it's all the way from the kinders up to grade 12. And I hope, Ann Arbor has about 12 to 15 teams working, they did last year. They didn't make it all to Henry Ford, but I hope that we can embrace that a little bit as well. Maybe natural, natural outcrop of this experience.
Yeah, that would be awesome. And there's so many, we taught Henry Ford's innovation. They have a whole innovation curriculum that we applied for a grant and got and did several years ago about the difference between innovation and invention and improvement and how do all of those work together? How can we teach kids to do stuff like that?
We sell some excellent programs and Lucy Howell there can give you all the information you need if you wanted to get your feet wet again in that.
Does the district retain patent rights to things that get created?
We did have a couple of kids ask that when we did the bike problem. We had a kid that came up and was like, if I see this, do I get to go make money off this? And we're like, oh, I haven't got this.
I'm sure we can work out an agreement of some kind.
What does the Invention Competition do? Is one 18-year-old who's working on her second patent?
That's awesome. It can happen. They have, they did, yes.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Action item. Can I have a motion to approve Kelly Van Singel, who serves as a Slene Area Schools representative to the WISD Parent Advisory Committee, as submitted by Superintendent Gray?
Just that Kelly Van Singel's been an active parent in our, in our community relatives, specifically to students with special needs. And it would be a wonderful representative of our community. She is replacing Lisa Renshler, who I would say is a longtime member of that committee and has done a great job in terms of really promoting advocacy as it relates to students with special needs. We actually have a second participant in terms of, so Kelly Hansen is our one and she actually is going to be transitioning to the president of the PAC, which is the Parent Advisory Council of the WISD. So I'm very happy to have both of those individuals represented in our schools and really be able to broaden the impact that we can have in that community.
So there's two reps from every district in the county?
Yes.
Questions? All those in favor, please signify with aye. Those opposed with nay? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. Discussion items, alumni feedback and data gathering. Superintendent Gray?
Yeah, I would just pass. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on some of the things that Dr. Lott and I are working on. One of the concepts and issues that we have is relates specifically to kind of measuring the Compass. The common quote is, you know, how do you know what the class of 2019, whether or not they're gonna be successful? We don't really know right now. We want to look down the road and see how does it have their experiences within Slene Area Schools impacted their success moving forward? And so really what we're looking at doing is develop some different metrics to really assess that impact within a window that's tight enough before they get so far out. And we've done some assessment of our alumni after they've been out for 20 or 30 years and gotten feedback and they become more memories and experiences of what they, the things they have. What we're looking now for is real specific feedback as related to their experiences in Slene Area Schools and how have they benefited them in that short-term exits from the district? And ultimately as well, what are they, what are they perceived as the gaps in our either instruction or curriculum or experiences that they were available? And so the effort really is to define and improve Slene Area Schools, but looking at it in terms of with people or individuals who are already out of our district. In order to do that, we really also want to have a cross-section. Several years ago, or a couple of years ago, if you recall, I tried to gather feedback from parents of kids, students who were gone for several years. I received back a lot of information, assessed them and looked, we were just absolutely blew it off. There's phenomenal responses of the success of kids. As I dug into the information, the families that were willing to provide their current student emails back to me tended to be families that were connected to the district in other ways, or felt very positive about it. So there was certainly a participation bias that was occurring. So Dr. Lott and I are devising a way to really look at what I would call cross-sections of the grade levels that are graduating. We have a lot of data in Power School that we were able to pull. So now we're, this summer, we're beginning the process. We're actually gonna, I'm showing you the draft letter of the class of 2019. We're actually gonna do 2018 and 2019 in an effort to really get a way to assess in a more clinical way, I guess I would say, the types of experiences our students have. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware of this. This will be kind of quiet work that we'll do as we continue to try and think about if the metric of success is not specifically an SAT score, but a success at life, we really need to get intentional about gathering data after our students exit our system to assess our impact.
Can we expect to see a report?
Yeah, I would think we would ever be, probably about this time next year, to be honest. I think our intention would be to assess them later into probably the February window. One would be two years out or a year and a half out. One would be, you know, eight months out of the district. We're trying to give them just enough of time away from the district. And we're, we do some exit surveys right now in terms of their experiences as they leave.
That's good.
But we're really trying to figure, once they start to gain additional experiences and they can reflect back what is it that they're seeing? Because ultimately, we're getting that, kind of that view, really within a narrow, you're still kind of in that aquarium of the community and trying to assess that, so.
This goes a little further than what ISD collects from their journey through college or middle school.
Correct, yeah, that's right. The National Clearinghouse stuff that we get, that is kind of the alt data. First of all, that's everyone that goes to school. So this, we are essentially, okay, we're collecting a cross-section and gonna do a little bit of a deeper dive into it. And we're gonna try to get a little, a little bit different information, again, specifically about their experiences as opposed to just their attainment in college, their grade points, their career pathways.
It's kind of like the presentation for Brock Close today at TEDx, when he was talking about the importance of soft skills. There's so much more to get at than just what we get from the WISD with, okay, here's who has the four-year degree, who has the. It's about those skills that they're already identifying in high school that they're using later in any career path or life path.
The one example I use, you know, when I gathered some information a couple of years ago, one of the things even within that group is that they want, they felt like they were not prepared enough for this, what I would call financial literacy, bank accounts, how interest works, leasing, some of those things. And so we've been continuing to target ways now to kind of share information within our existing curriculum, try to have our students have some of those experiences to continue to gain some knowledge.
Are you using K-12 or our own survey?
No, we're gonna be doing our own. I shouldn't say, we are asking them for feedback, but our intention is to do what we can.
Statistic students.
Yeah.
Finance project update, Superintendent Gray?
Just a, one or two. I shared the kind of the deeper dive report as it relates to the three main areas of the project. One, the middle school, a lot of planning has gone into that. That has not started yet. That literally will start Friday afternoon with the initial abatement work. That will be done there. They're anticipating in general, between 10 to 25 individuals will be working there on a daily basis throughout the summer. Peak time will be 30 individuals or so getting that prepared and ready to go. Well, that will be a tight window. Thankfully, it's largely not weather-dependent, nor does it have a large, what I would call lead time issues as it relates to it. So we're excited to get that underway. Many of the cabinets, et cetera, that are necessary for that have already arrived. Just confident that we'll be in good shape there. Always a challenge when you start to really get behind the walls of existing construction. But again, we're relatively confident that we've done some renovations there. At the high school, the track and tennis courts are currently being kind of peeled back and prepared. The drainage issues around our track are being addressed right now. They intend, in fact, I think they intended yesterday to start kind of peeling more of the track itself back. With that, both of those facilities, kind of a double set as it relates to track and a single set as it relates to tennis, there's some curing that needs to take place. So you're gonna see a lot of activity in the next couple of weeks. And then you're gonna see asphalt sit for 28 days to cure before surfaces are applied. In the case of the track, the surface that is applied then also needs to cure additionally. And so with tennis, once that last surface is applied, we can begin to move forward. But again, we're continuing to kind of move forward. Anticipate six, we've had about six to 10 individuals out there daily now working on, in those areas largely with excavation work and starting to transition to the second phase of that. The west parking lot, I'll be very frank, the west parking lot was in jeopardy for a fair amount of time as we worked through issues with water retention. Police report those were resolved, I think, in a real positive way. We're expanding in those parking areas as it relates specifically with the intention of improving pedestrian safety. That's kind of an outcropping of the feedback we got, we received from the community during our traffic study, trying to pull some pedestrian opportunity, our waiting opportunities away from the building. Two shade structures where we're going in, a large kind of walkway between the west entrance of the building and towards the stadium. You know, having more additional student parking kind of towards the back of that facility and allow for a morning traffic flow with parent drop-offs that occur there. So we're excited about that. That is underway now. If you've been there now, we're kind of starting to restrict access. With our seniors gone, if we're able to get a jump on the clearing of some of those areas, there'll be a change in grade there. And you'll notice that that area opens up a fair amount as it relates to the flow of that parking lot. Maybe about 10 to 14 daily there. And we have about four out there right now because they're literally just clearing the wooded areas. And then lastly, the traffic light, that's, we're kind of continuing to negotiate that with the city in terms of making sure that our timeline in terms of helping with the traffic light is consistent with when they're working on industrial drive and is consistent with when the county is working on campus parkway. And again, love that traffic, I'm sorry, the pedestrian crosswalk adjacent to the Slene FC lot will occur in that timeline. It's somewhat driven by West Rock kind of Row Commission, but it is tied to the west parking lot bit.
And elementary furniture stall?
Yeah, elementary furniture is coming in to be swapped out at night. I think by tonight or tomorrow night at 10:00 PM, the vast majority will take care of it. There's a little bit of a delay with some of the products that were supposed to arrive yesterday and didn't arrive.
That is early, right? It's not supposed to be done until the summer?
Yeah, well, we had coordinated it to be done this week and then there was a delay and then they were back on in hours. So I do applaud that, you know, the staff, the faculty, the building principals, building grounds department. This is the bit, and the fact that it's gone as smooth as it has is a minor miracle given the amount of transition that has occurred relative to furniture, the ability for us to really have a cohesive plan from a donation, salvage, you know, sale, you know, kind of environment to some of the stuff we're getting rid of. And understand, we're talking about, we're not talking about a parking lot. We're talking about, that's my favorite ever chair. That's my favorite ever picnic table. I've always had this from when I was in, wanted to be a teacher in college. So there's a lot more emotional impact in terms of furniture than some of the other stuff. So I applaud the people that I've given that task to and I've stayed out of it. Thank you.
I mean, sorry. Finance committee update, Trustee Valenti?
Yes. Finance committee met last night. Yeah, this is sort of unfair. Everyone else gets to celebrate our great teachers, our great students, our great programs. And as a finance chair, I feel like I'm the guy at the party who is taking away the punch bowl right when we're really having a great time. But at our meeting yesterday, I was hoping that we would see a slight narrowing of our projected deficit that we're in this current year. Unfortunately, the news we got is not very favorable. And we have very serious concerns about some very significant structural deficits, not just for our current year that's ending this month here, but also even larger structural deficits for next year. Our concern is so much, we have a special finance meeting scheduled next Monday to get a better handle on this. So unfortunately, I'm the guy who's taking the punch bowl away here. So that's what I have to report. We'll have more at the next meeting.
I don't want to call you Dennis Downer, but.
I understand. Sorry to be the guy who pulls that.
I will say, you know, it's one of the things that pulls off that. You know, I think our strategic framework has a goal around financial security and we list our other four goals first. But we always say that our last goal around financial security allows for us to achieve. You know, we want to do Innovation Lab. We want to do these things that we want to have. Obviously, we want to have our students, we need to get our numbers right.
Right.
We'll do it and we'll get it done.
Right. And I want to differentiate between our bond spending and our operating spending. These are two totally different, like, so when you're talking about redoing structural facilities, that's not coming out of our operating budget. That's not what's causing the problem.
We can't touch that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everyone understands, just because we're having a new track put in or new tennis courts or a new parking lot, that is not what's causing the problem. I'm ready for it, okay?
Policy committee update, Secretary McBegey. Thank you. Trustee Valenti?
Yeah, thank you. I like analogies. So I think about our policy committee as going to the gym. We try and tighten our core every time we go through the policies. Some of the policies are a little flabby and we try and tighten them up. So, and thanks to Niola. So I just want to talk about two or three of them. One, we've already discussed, the public participation policy. Also trying to figure out a way of qualifying the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee based roughly on the wellness policy. We didn't really get to that, but we will in the future. We're looking at anti-grassroom policies as well. We talked very briefly about the Emergency Operations Plan, which is fairly new policy that needs, that requires that a plan needs to be placed by January and the team, the administration teams will be working on that all of the summer. And on top of that, we were also discussing, and this was interesting, none of us knew how to spell this particular word properly. Yeah. Marijuana.
Marijuana, the state spells it two different ways.
Actually, that's true.
The state is of two minds. So it's important because Michigan law changed. And we send a lot of students to Ontario area or tricks to Toronto and Stratford and laws in Ontario have changed also, decriminalizing. So Eagle Eye, Trustee Stephen noted that we banned alcohol, tobacco and illicit drugs. And we wanted to figure out some sort of language to the policy that also embraces marijuana. But not too much of it embraces. We need to acknowledge.
The point is, it's not illicit.
We're gonna call it acknowledge marijuana is no longer illicit, but certainly not allowed.
Can you clarify, this is for chaperones on Bealtris?
Teachers are allowed. This is for chaperones. This is for chaperones. Anybody, any adult who happens to wander by the group is considered a chaperone. This is, is all inclusive, all encompassing, and just letting you know. And after that, there were also some very interesting minor considerations that are in the minutes if you want to see them. But that is my report on the policy committee. We meet again in, it's August something, August 12th.
Thank you secretary Mudday. Consent agenda. I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. A, approval of the regular board of education meeting minutes of May 28, 2019. B, approval of the board finance committee meeting minutes of May 20, 2019. C, approval of payment of the general fund account payable of June 11, 2019 in the amount of $925,661.44. D, approval of payment of serious due bond fund accounts payable of June 11, 2019 in the amount of $301,351.63. E, receive and file the June curriculum, finance, and human resources reports. Uh, approval of the early graduation request submitted by superintendent Grayden. And G, approval of the following field trip is submitted by superintendent Grayden. Field trip number 186, FFA National Convention of Indianapolis, Indiana on October 29th, November 2nd, 2019.
So who?
All those in favor, please signify with aye. Aye. Those opposed with nay. Hearing on the motion carries seven zero. On the next agenda, we'll actually have two meetings on the 25th of June, and our first meeting will be a meeting to adopt the budget. Budget hearing. We'll adopt it later, but we'll be hearing Dennis' good news after a couple of weeks, right? Working on it, okay. And isn't that so? We will also have a closed session for the purpose of superintendent Grayden's school year evaluation. We will have an action item for some policies.
Susan mentioned outdoor.
Student showcase, we have a couple more. Next week is our last student showcase, we will not have them July and August, and we'll start up again in September. Public comment, a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting by filling out the how to address the board of education forum that is provided prior to a meeting. As note, the board of education members will not respond directly to public comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. Public participation portion of a meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or a student. First up is Ann Hurst Christ.
Ann Hurst Christ with the Foundation for Celine Area Schools. She may need a time being, I'm taking my three minutes today. Okay, I'm giving you a lot of overview here. So this past year, we gave $86,000 to the schools, yeah, 39 grants, and actually, because for the first time ever this year, we began more of a rolling grant cycle, so it wasn't just all grants in November. We, every other month, we had grants actually come in, so even just today, we approved two more, so that'll be now 41, so we're very excited about that. We are, many different things are coming up, obviously, in the future that we're already working on, but just a couple thank yous. First of all, we have two student reps on our board each year, and always a junior and a senior, and they do two years. And our senior this year, Matt Heinsman, was the one that rotated off and graduated, and I just want to let you know what a phenomenal man he is and what all the wonderful things that he did for the foundation. Also, as superintendent Grayden always does, he assigns an administration rep to our board, and this year, for the last couple of years, Alex Shinko has done it, and he is rotating off this year. He has done a phenomenal job. He is a stream doer, and I'm going to miss him terribly, but we are going to continue to work together as he is now the president of the Celine Alumni Association, so we're going to do more collaboration there, we're hoping, in the next year. So we're really excited about that. And also, we always have a wonderful trustee from the board, and so thank you, Eddie, for all that you do, that you'll continue to do, always appreciate all your input. This year, we have done a variety of different things throughout the schools. We would encourage, I would encourage you to go to our website. All the grants are listed very specifically with a slide that kind of gives you an idea with pictures and verbiage and outcomes and budgets about the things that they have done this year and that have been implemented. So we're just very proud as our students, as well as our teachers. This year, we had two other sets of students come forward with student-led grants that we just started a couple of years ago, so we are very proud of them and very excited about that. To the board, I just want to thank superintendent Grayden. As I have said often, it is not common amongst executive directors through education foundations who always have a good working relationship with their superintendent, and I am so proud of that, I am so thankful for that, as well as all your administration, superintendent Grayden, so thank you for that. Upcoming events, we're doing a lot of outreach this summer, but specifically, I would love you to all have on your calendars, our Hall of Fame weekend will be the 13th and 14th of September, and we're excited about our new Hall of Fame class. And then our annual fall kickoff is going to be on October 17th, here again at Liberty School. Another successful year, as we put this one to bed, we are now almost at $1.3 million that we have given to Celineary Schools since 1987. So thank you to each of you, you are always supportive for us, and deeply appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Brianna?
The record of note, that was precisely three minutes.
Hi, my name is Brianna Camaro-Sula. I use she for pronouns, and I am a former, a former leader of Uproar, which is a social justice clinic, first aid council, and I say former because I am a class of 2019 alumni. Never said that before today, but I'm so excited. And for the first time, I'm here with no sheet paper, but me, a white card, and a smile on my face. But before I get into stuff, I want to apologize to the admin, because I have yet to fill out that survey, but, okay, but, you know, myself, it'll take a couple hours to fill out with everything I have to say about the district, so I, you know, make sure you check for that lengthy, lengthy form. And in life, it is much easier to complain rather than to appreciate, and I'd like to talk about some good things I've seen recently. So trustee Eaststep started talking about the Uproar Stonewall Project for Pride Month. We collected boxes from like the cabin rooms and from different teachers' rooms, and then covered it with black paper to make it look like a brick stone wall, like the stone wall rise, that really needs steps and gains into the LGBT plus community. Like trustee Eaststep said that it is the 50th anniversary, and the two people that really spearheaded this project heard in the audience, Anya Davidson and John Wainbrook. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. They've all had hard work for the past multiple weeks of trying to figure out how we're going to do this, and it's many feet tall, many feet wide, and we also gave students of Celineary Schools the opportunity to write on statements what LGBT plus community or Pride Month means to them, and we've mostly gotten amazing answers, and we've shared some with our Instagram that just really filled our hearts, because it's a lot like we accept, like accepting everyone, being who you are, or more personal things like being able, someone saying, I'm able to be myself, or I was able to come out to my family with the help of the significant March of June. And so that's just a big momentous accomplishment for us. For definitely have, we only, last year, we had a point of water project that we did in Combs, and this year's doing the pride project. I was at the TEDx this morning, and they did a wonderful job. I saw trustee E. Seven, trustee Seven, and trustee Mudday, who told my dad, told me that my dad's birthday was today, which I knew. And a mother came up to me, and she said, I saw you with the last four of you, you are amazing, and I just want to let you know, you've helped me so much with my ignorance, and I want you to know that you saying these things has helped me, and I can help my interracial family with my daughters, and that, so they can spread it to others. So every voice counts, and every time someone, especially you, speaks up, it matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Change.
Well, I'm Paige Jess, I'm a sophomore, and I again, like Brianna, I'm going to talk more grace today than I am going to be talking about anything that needs to be changed. And I first want to start out by talking about TEDx, because I got the privilege to be a mentor along with some of the audience, pretty bright, she was also a mentor, and was one of the five little students who was able to come up here and accept her awards. And I think it's amazing that our kids are able to speak out about things they find extremely important, and that we're starting to teach these kids how to be more globally connected, and to look around them, and try to figure out how to learn things. And I think we need to keep that in mind, it's extremely important that we realize that our kids are way more capable than we can ever realize. That of course, there's going to be certain things kids are confused about, but we know that by seeing a fifth grader speak about their mental health stigma and impression, that even young children can explore and figure out complex topics. And I think it's important to realize that our children are ready to be taught that by censoring material from them, it would only be putting them at a disadvantage. Our kids are so globally connected, so ready to learn because of all the great work that Celine has been doing. Even the innovation lab that went today, they talked about building empathy in students, and that's so extremely important, and I praise the Celine Schools for making sure that kids have the environment that they want, so they can learn as much as possible. And then the only thing that I would have to say that isn't just completely praised is the fact that although sometimes it's hard because there's pressure from parents, and we're trying to please everyone in the Celine school system, we can never make strides by censoring information. Our kids want to grow and learn, and they are so information hungry, they want to make sure that they know everything, and by denying them that information in a safe environment, we are doing them a huge disservice. I saw a fourth grader speak about plastic in our oceans, and how we can make a difference at home in Celine. Our kids are ready for complex topics, they're ready to learn, they're ready to make these great strides, and we need to do the best that we can to make sure that these kids are informed, and that they have the safe space to communicate all their questions. A parent at the last meeting spoke about worrying about putting trained books in the curriculum, because they were worried that their children would be confused by them, because they were not nuanced enough, and that they had wide, widespread strokes. Now, what I say to this is the fact that our fourth and fifth graders are so ready to research topics and learn the most that they can, that our kids are going to ask questions. If they're confused, they now have a safe environment that they can learn things in. So overall, I'm extremely happy with what Celine is doing, and how much we are putting a good environment for our students to thrive and learn, and it's important that we keep that, we keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I do not prepare diversity. But I'm going to say this little short spiel, I would like to thank you for inviting Uproar as a club to present in front of the June Pride proclamation about the Uproar project, about the stone wall, and what we did, and, thank you.
How do you follow up all these great words from these amazing students? Kevin Camaro-Sula, Ethan Diz, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight on my birthday. Do you plan to do that way? I'm, I'm here in support of the school policies for quality, diversity, and inclusive education for all Celine students. I know you've heard this a lot, but I do think we need to continue talking about, more about the positive programs and policies that the school is implementing. You can see just probably every meeting, how, you know, the wonderful things that these kids are accomplishing, and what they're learning. It truly takes a village. Parents, family, teachers, friends, coaches, all are important for our kids to get a safe education. I've lived in Celine now for just over 20 years. I volunteered in classrooms, field trips, fundraisers, and more for, for both my kids. Racked soccer for six years, and really enjoyed all the different kids, and seeing them struggle with, whether it's kicking a ball, or getting, you know, working together as a team, they struggled, and they learned from these challenging situations. This includes reading books about children that are different from them. I know we need to figure this out and move forward so that our amazing children can continue to learn. They, they do great things, they have open and accepting minds, it's amazing what they can do even from an early age. They really just want to be treated like other people want to be treated. Reading diverse books in a, in a classroom is what helps them understand that they are all individuals, and they are special. Brianna started reading her daughter books in the fourth grade, and she did become a mentor. I know we all want to be good parents, we work really hard to teach our children love, respect, and inclusivity, among other things. So if we withhold these books and others about diversity, where does it suck? We need to enrich our children. And then so why are so many children being bullied? Bullied for being who they are, for being different, for being LGBT plus. While this has been discussed and positive plans have been implemented, there's very few books, and I appreciate the ones that, that are there. I'm Slovak. Anybody else here Slovak? All right, so I'm different. All right, there's two of us. So I'm different, so should we remove Slovak books from children's reading? No, and I run out of time. But I want to say thank you, if children and adults were to learn and read about Slovak and LGBT plus children, we'll all be, we'll all be better for it. Thank you. Cory?
Good evening. My name is Cory Lope, Sheikar Hurst, I live at 201 Nichols Drive in Celine. We moved to Celine in 2009, just in time for my oldest sister, Hannah. I worked down the road at the University of Michigan, I've been there now for 19 years. The first year of 15, I worked in central finance. I still work in finance, so I feel for you. For the last four years, I've been working in the College of Literature, Science, and Arts, otherwise known as LSA. LSA is the largest liberal arts college in the US. It is where you take your math, science, English, humanities, and art classes, just to name a few. Most freshmen start out in LSA, and even if they don't start in LSA, they do take classes in LSA. The University of Michigan has a vice provost for the Office of Diversity Equity and Inclusion. He is in charge of all DEI at the university. In LSA, we have an associate team for diversity equity and inclusion, and we recently hired a new diversity equity and inclusion manager who came from Michigan State, where at Michigan State, she was the DEI expert for the entire university there. The university has a strategic plan for DEI. In addition to the university's plan, LSA has their own plan. DEI is part of my annual performance evaluation, evaluating on how DEI fits into the work that I do, what DEI classes I have taken, and what I've learned from those classes. So DEI is a part of my everyday life. Around campus, there are posters and flyers advertising various DEI events, classes and other opportunities for faculty staff to attend. Just today, one of my coworkers mentioned that at her daughter's freshman orientation at Central Michigan University, there was a segment about their DEI program. So I started thinking, how many of our graduating seniors will be going to go home in the fall? Just today, one of my coworkers mentioned that at her daughter's freshman orientation at Central Michigan University, there was a segment about their DEI program. So I started thinking, how many of our graduating seniors are going to go home in the fall? Or MSU or CMU, just to name a few. I recently, just last week, attended the boys' lacrosse event. Of the 17 seniors, three of them are going to U of M and three more are going to MSU. And I know that at Seleni, we take pride in preparing our students academically for college, but are we preparing them socially? Are they prepared to go away in the fall to live in a dorm room with roommates or possibly a different race, religion, or gender affiliation? Maybe everyone in their dorm room looks just like them and believes in the same things and has the same moral values, but maybe they won't. They will definitely meet different people in their classes and the clubs and organizations that they join. And will they be prepared for that? What about the professors? If we do not have diversity, equity, and inclusion in our K-12 classes, how are we preparing our kids for college overall?
My name, for the last minute, my name is Breanna Davis, I'm a resident in Seleni. I'm also a parent of many kids in the district. I want to thank you for the changes you did today, well, the previous meeting and now. I know it was, I'm in the process of trying to understand more how information comes to the public and whatever. I think I just want to share, I just emailed you guys this, maybe one or two things I decided I wanted on public record for people to know, that these are issues I had from last meeting, mostly about minutes information to the public. You guys are voting on policies and the policies are that are not being listed in the minutes of the board. So no one from May 14th in the public knows what policy changes we were to make, even if it's technical, they're not there. I got them because I went to the office and requested the packets, which you guys have graciously given, but we had not pre-stated those. So as far as I know, I'm the only one who knows those changes. And so my few suggestions again is that, again, all agendas, both DEI and the sex ed meetings, as well as these meetings should be online. You're doing a lot better job, I know, two or three times, having come in to look and say, it's Monday morning, they're not there. This is about three times now. If you're going to differentiate between the information on your web page and the information available in the office, because those are actually different, you at least tell the public that they're available in the office to get it. I think that's just again, some way that make it more transparent and let us know what's going on. Again, you know, listening to policy numbers or some changes would really help us as the public know what's going on in the district. And so I just would like to commit that part of this record and appreciate all you've done and help me understand how to get the information I need. Thank you.
The next meeting of the board will actually be a hearing that will be Tuesday, June 25, 2019 at 6 o'clock. That will be a budget hearing. And then our normal meeting will take place June 25 at 6:30 PM here at the Lowry School Boardroom. I have a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of June 11, 2019 at 7:41 PM. Support? All those in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, motion carries seven zero, or adjourned. Thank you, everyone.